Good evening, all. Called to order the Arvada City Council Workshop for October 9, 2023. Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Parry.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Very good. We have three different workshops tonight. The first is going to be the Second Budget Workshop on the 2024 Pay Plan Update, and Gabriella is going to lead us off on this. Ms. Bommer.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. So yes, tonight I have two topics for you. Both topics you'll take action on next week, so I'm here to present some information behind those and take your questions. So I'll start with the 2024 Pay Plan, and we'll move right into the what the workshop will cover tonight. Strategic alignment, how the pay plan aligns to your council strategic plan, a little bit about the design and the market conditions that led us to the recommendations we're making, and what the recommendations are and the budget impact. And we'll close out with some information on other total rewards. We prioritized this for 2024, and then what's next on our radar? So the Pay Plan work is covered under the Organizational Service and Effectiveness Work System. We do have a strategic result to update our total rewards philosophy and strategy by the end of the year to be able to improve the city's ability to attract and retain a high-performing workforce of the future. And so we did update our philosophy. We distributed that out earlier this year with your support, and it includes being that employer of choice that can really attract and retain a really high-performing workforce that's dedicated to public service and offers, you know, personifies our mission, vision, and values. And in order to do that, we really aim to be competitive in a total package of rewards. So pay is one element that we'll talk more in depth about tonight, but there's other rewards that our employees say they value and generations upcoming value greatly. And so we aim to be competitive in all of these areas. And when we say competitive, we do recognize that we also need to be fiscally responsible. So we don't aim to be number one or the top payer in any of these one categories, but we do aim to be above the norms of our competitors so that if we can accomplish that in any one of these areas, we have an overall compelling rewards package. Okay. So I'm going to move on to talk about the Pay Plan because that's what the workshop is, a Pay Plan update, and a little bit about the design of the Pay Plan. The Pay Plan itself does contain all the approved budgeted FTEs, and they're grouped by job families that have similar characteristics. So you can see on the left side of the slide, the job families that we group them by. And then each one has a number of pay grades which define the range of pay for jobs in those pay grades, and those are market-based. Jobs are assigned to the pay grades based on their market value as well as what we consider an internal value. And then employees are placed into their grade based on their own qualifications as compared to their peers. And then they can move along the pay grade through a series of steps. So it's called Step and Grade System. And our step system design lends itself really well to pay equity, so we're really proud to have a very equitable pay program here at the city. We do pay equity analysis twice a year now. In the spring, we do a very in-depth analysis to see where we are by family, and we were close to about 3% pay gap back then. And that number is really tiny compared to the big gaps that they're trying to close across the nation and here in Colorado. But it also is subject to the fact that our step anniversaries happen throughout the year, so at any given time, that number will change. And when we did the analysis again in August, it was down to 1.6. So it's really good results. All right, I'm going to talk a little bit about the market conditions that we're facing currently. And although the economy is showing signs of slowing down and improving for us, we still have a really tight labor market. As you can see, there's really low unemployment still, and there's jobs available, two jobs for every person who wants a job. So when you have that kind of climate in the employment market, it leads to higher turnover. Employees that aren't available to take vacancies end up, when employers can't find people, applicants to take vacancies, they poach them from other employers. So we're seeing the results of that in our turnover. You can see here on the right, the overall industry average in Colorado for turnover is nearly 30%. It's 27.1%, so it's pretty high. I wouldn't want to be there. Government comes down a little bit with the overall average at 17.4%. And then you can see there that Arvada closed the year in 2022 at 15%, which is very similar to our surrounding cities. And it's a little too high for us still. That's not a comfortable number, so we're looking forward to seeing that drop as we continue.
Good. Ms. Simpson's got a question for you.
Yes, thank you. So Gabriella, excuse me, for the unemployment vacancy, two jobs for every one unemployed person. Are these at all ends of the spectrum? Are we seeing this with both service workers and lawyers and higher-end jobs, or are they concentrated in any particular area?
This is a general average of all jobs, but yes, they're going to be higher in certain sectors, and the public, the hospitality industry is being hit extra hard. So you can feel that in our golf courses and our restaurants. But in general, this is more of an average of overall industry. And it's reported by the Bureau, the Colorado Department of Labor. So the way they report it is a ratio of 0.5, which is two jobs for every one unemployed person in general.
Okay. It would just, it would be interesting to see which sectors might be more impacted with that, because that might lend us to maybe trying to, I don't know if it's compensate better or create better conditions, to attract more workers in certain sectors that are being hit harder, whereas in other areas, if we're getting excellent quality candidates applying for the jobs, then we maybe don't have to pay as much attention to that.
Noted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So go move into more of our own turnover metrics here at Arvada. So on the left is a chart of how turnover's been occurring for the city over the last few years. At the very left of the chart is where it was about 10 years ago. You can see we were, you know, less than 6% turnover. Those were the good times. And then before the pandemic, we already felt a little discomfort with a 12.5% turnover, and that was pretty challenging. We thought that was challenging until the pandemic hit, and we peaked at almost 18% turnover, and that was painful. The good news is it's starting to come back down. We peaked at 15.2% last year, and this year, we're averaging about 1% per month. So at this rate, we expect to close the year around 12% if things continue the way they have been trending. And just for perspective, that's about seven to eight people leaving every month. So when you put it that way, it hurts.
Mr. Mormon?
Just a clarification question. What are RIFs?
Reduction in force or layoffs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Pfeifer?
So on the pie graph, year-to-date turnover.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to think out loud, sorry. Since this workshop, I guess we're a little allowed to do that, right?
Yes.
Is this, this is just total number, not, not like, because I know PD has people leaving and coming. I'm sure we're having that across the whole board. Is this where we are today, or is this what we're?
The pie chart is the percentage of the turnover. So we're at 8.2% turnover right now, and the police department has about 40% of that number, 40% of our turnover.
So it's actually turnover that we're actually seeing in this case. It says number of 19.
Yes.
We're seeing 19 people leave.
Yes.
And then?
Through August, through the end of August.
Well, not, and that include, you have to include the non-sworn PD as well. So that's the 40%, that's the 40%.
Yeah, we do break them, we break up the.
But it's not a net, it's a, it's a, it's not a net number with folks coming in and out. It may just be.
It's purely turnover.
Per, okay.
Purely number of people who have left this year. So the police department does have the highest share of the pie, especially when you combine non-sworn and sworn, and then followed by infrastructure with our CDL drivers, commercial drivers, and our engineers. And those are our more sought-after competitive positions.
Is, and I know the chief's here, is, is on the police side, is the churn that's happening this year, is the same narrative still, or is there another reason why we're still seeing the churn kind of those numbers, or?
I have some more information to share.
Oh, is that on different slide?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, we'll wait, we'll wait.
Definitely, it's no secret how much challenge, how challenged they have been with all of the national narrative and the loss of, you know, line-of-duty deaths that they've suffered. And also, the policies in Colorado are driving quite a few of them away from the calling. So it's a lot of it. But, okay, so that's a little bit about our turnover metrics. Why are they leaving? That's the next slide. So in our total rewards survey, we asked our employees, why, why would they leave? Why do they think they would leave the city for another job? Not, not just retirement, or, you know, they want to get out of the workforce, but for another job. And the number-one answer they gave us was higher pay. And then you can see on there the other things they ranked in order of importance, career advancement, better benefits, remote flexible work, value, feeling valued and respected. So on the right is why they actually are leaving. When they leave, we ask them to do an exit interview. About 41 of them have responded to that request, and these are the reasons they're giving us. So number one is better position. And when we look deeper into what does that mean, career advancement, better pay or benefits, different field of work. So you can see that there's parallels between what they told us they would leave for and what they're actually leaving for. And on the sworn side, personal and family reasons is the number-one reason that they're leaving. So we know that that carries a lot of that, that challenge that they've been, they've been experiencing.
Sorry, can I just get another clarification on, so the, the left, the question, why would they leave, was asked of every current employee that's still working, assuming with us. Okay.
And then I have the second question, I guess. You know, it kind of throws me a little bit on better flexible remote work. Do we have numbers of how many people are remote out of our entire staff, and how many are on flex, or is, do we have percentages on that by any chance? Because I, I think the city honestly is way flexible than anywhere else right now. So it just surprises me that that was up that high, and maybe it's the timing of it. But like I've been sharing with the team here, there's, corporations and businesses are going to 100% back in the office. So I'm just surprised that's up there. I don't know if you're going to, if you have some insight, or?
No, the only thing I would say is that when people leave to work fully remote, we are, we are generally not there. We have a lot of people that work remote three days a week, but in conversations that I've had, it's when they've talked about leaving, it's I can work from home all the time.
Well, I'll just stress, at least in the industry, and the state, and everywhere else, we're, at least in my part of the state division, and being in the corporate world, that's the opposite that's happening in the industry. So just, we just need to be a little aware of that.
Yeah.
Because there's so much property people own, and they're vacant. And I think a lot of these corporations are saying, well, wait, hold on, I have empty buildings that have nobody in them, so should I sell them? And then they can't sell them because no one's going in. And so they're telling their employees to come in four to five days a week now.
Yeah, I'm going to say that when we looked at this more in-depth, the written comments that were offered, it wasn't just about remote work. Some of them want remote from anywhere. They want to work from Mexico or Arizona, and we, we can't give them that kind of flexibility here. We, they have to be in Colorado. And so that's one of our challenges. But also, it's about that flexibility and being able to come in to work, you know, other than the eight-to-five Monday through Friday. They want four-day work weeks, or they might want, you know, four hours.
It's just not remote work. It's four tens or nines, or whatever they want to do. They want flexibility in those hours.
Exactly. And some of them want more predictable schedules, too, like, or they don't want to work shifts, or they don't want to be on call. So it's a variety of things.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Do you have further deep data on that, further down like that? That's interesting information. Because I think that that's such a broad stuffer in there. I think, I didn't even think about half of what you just said could influence that bar.
Yeah, it's a big, it's a broad spectrum of flexibility that the incoming generations are looking for. I actually have another slide that kind of talks a little bit more about that next.
I will stop asking questions, sorry.
You're one step ahead of me.
I try not to look at the, I try not to look at it beforehand. Wait till you tell me.
No problem. But I wanted to really just show you that our employees know what they want. And so the fact that the reasons they actually are leaving closely parallel what they're telling us, you know, we have to take that into account when we survey, and how we build our rewards overall. So to get to your next, your next question, a little bit about our recruitment metrics. So this is a chart of our number of applicants per job posting. So we are seeing an all-time low in our applications, which is requiring us to go out and be a lot more aggressive and proactive with our outreach and marketing, creating some more work for our teams to really find those qualified candidates out there. And so where are they all? Where did they all go, right? Because, you know, people need to work, so where are they? I did a little bit of research on this. This is, this is nationwide information, but you'll see here that a lot of the reasons they're not coming back to work are the same reasons they're leaving jobs. So millions of workers left their jobs during the pandemic. That was what we all called the Great Resignation. Several of them didn't come back. They retired early, or they're still home. Some of them have long COVID. Some don't want to be exposed back to, they're worried, they're nervous. Some don't have opportunities that allow them to come back to work, like lack of childcare, location concerns, things like that. And so there's a lot of people that didn't come back. But of those that are coming back, they're now being called, it's called, being called the Great Reshuffle, because they have changed their mindset. And I guess really the newer generations, the incoming generations are of this mindset of, of working to live, not living to work, right? So they are not willing to give up their nights, their weekends. They want to work a 40-hour or less work week. They don't want to work overtime. They want that, you know, personal life comes first, family comes first. They're looking for purpose, so they're changing careers. They're prioritizing their health and well-being. They want that, that better work culture, that culture that really values them and puts them first as a customer. And so we're seeing a lot of that translated into why people are leaving or choosing different jobs, very similar to the reasons our employees are telling us they're leaving. Personal, family reasons, looking for purpose, looking for predictable schedules, flexibility. They, you know, the incoming generations want freedom. They want gigs. They want freelancing. So those are tough for us to answer, but we do what we can with flexibility where we can. I would say that those of us who are Gen Xers like myself, maybe a few Baby Boomers and some older Millennials that are still, that are in the workforce, are starting to come around to this mindset, too. We lived through COVID, and our lives have, you know, have a different meaning now. And we don't want to work to live, live to work anymore. So important things to consider overall. Does that get to your, the questions you were asking?
Yes, I had this conversation with my oldest son this weekend. So it's very interesting because he does not want to work, but he complains that he doesn't have money. So I have a lot of deep thoughts. I was thinking maybe I should have you come and talk to him.
Yep. So this is the work environment we're living in today, and it's evolving. It's now being called the Great Compromise. Employers want people to come back to the office. Employees are saying no. So somehow, they got to meet in the middle, the Great Compromise. That's, that's what we're going into now. All right, so back to pay. Pay was on there. They want transparency. They want fair pay. They want competitive pay. So although pay is not always the first driver of turnover, it is an important factor. It can become a demotivator if people don't feel it's fair or competitive. So it's important that we get it right. So every year, we do a scan of our market. We look at what's happened in the past year since we last updated the Pay Plan, and we look at what's projected for the future year. And this is what we found. The Bureau of Labor Statistics reported that pay changed about 4.5%, 4.7% for government workers, and a little higher for police. Service workers in general includes police officers, so 5.5% movement there for them. And that's what happened in the last year. Now, we did adjust our Pay Plan by about 6% last year, so I feel like we really captured that movement pretty well. And now we need to make sure we're staying on top of the future projections. So we collect information from our, our sister cities or surrounding cities. We collect information from the Employers Council for Colorado, and then a environmental scan of what's going on nationally. And those are the numbers you see there. The Society of Human Resources Management, which we call SHRM, predicts 4.5% pay increases for 2024. And Employers Council has it a little lower at 3.8% for government employers. These are projections. And then our sister, our surrounding peer cities that we compete with the most for our employees and are most similar to us, are reporting merit increase budgets of about 3% to 5% for 2024. And merit increase budgets include everything from structure, structural adjustments like we do here, and performance-based. So it's grouped together. And so we're presenting it in the same way this year for you. We're grouping our, what we're recommending to adjust ranges with, with the step increases that we give every year, so you get a better comparison of the two. So these are the numbers that led to our recommendations, and here they are. Our recommendations for 2024 is to adjust our job family ranges for our police by 4%, and then 3% for all other job families, combined with the step increases that they're eligible for when they move in, in their steps every year for performance. That averages out to about 5.75% for sworn and 4.7% for all other families. So when you compare those merit budgets, this fits really well and competes well with those numbers.
Mr. Jones?
Just a comment. So coming from the private sector, this is very good. So for instance, my business that's in the private sector, last year, we had a 5% merit increases. This year, or for 2020, I'm just, that's for this year. For 2024, we're budgeting 4%. And we don't have the step increases that you have built in for those individuals. So I think that makes your, from my perspective, you're right in there, actually probably a little better.
Thank you.
Ms. Pfeifer?
So to be clear on total payout increases, so we can clarify this, this slide, only 42% are going to get that percent of the 5.75, and only 70% will get the 4.7. All else would just get the 4 and 3%.
Well, they, they're averages overall. So the actual step increases themselves, those who do get them, they're more like 3 to 5, 3% for our non-sworn, and they're much higher for the police, which I'll show you in a minute. But because only 42% of them are within the range, that's where that average number comes from.
That slide's confusing. We probably should, yeah, because you don't say average 1. And 2, you're saying the average is 1.75 on 42% of the eligible sworn officers is the average?
It's the cost, really. It's what the, what it comes to in terms of financial cost. It's, that's, what I'm trying to do is an apples-to-apples with the merit pay comparison. So when a city says they're paying 3% to 5%, that means an individual can get anywhere from, depending on performance, they could get 0% to 10%, right? So an individual increase is going to differ, but on average, it's costing 3% to 5%.
Okay. I'll wait till your other slides.
So another way to say that is 70% of our eligible, so 42% of the sworn are going to get a 4% adjustment plus their step increase, which could be as high as 7.25%.
But it averages 1.75?
Because only, yeah.
But only 40, oh, because it's, you're using 100% of the police officers, the sworn, is how you got that average, or is it the average of the 42%?
I'm confused.
I am, too.
Brian?
That's probably why. It's not good.
Call a friend.
Yeah, I'll wait till you get to these slides again, and get going, and I'll try to change it.
Do we want to continue, or do you want to wait?
Well, I don't know what this is saying, because I don't want to mislead any employees or anything. But if I'm confused, I'm sure somebody else will be if we're going to go through this. So if, if the step increases average is 1.75.
Yep.
Is the average of the 42%?
It's of the total.
Or is it average of 100%?
It is. It's of the total. So we take.
But only 42% of the 100% are going to actually get?
Correct.
An average of 1.75?
No. So if we start with all the employees from the previous year as 100, let's just say, and then 42% of them are going to get a step, that step can range anywhere from, on the police family, it's a little larger, but let's just say anywhere from 4% to 7%. So those 42 employees are going to get that amount of increase, and we add that in and then divide it by where we started.
The 100.
That's when you get the 1.75.
Oh, so you included the ones that were not going to get it. That's how you get that number. Got it.
Yeah, I agree with Bob. That's a little misleading, because my immediate assumption was then sworn officers who got both pay and step were going to get 5.75.
Right.
And that's not accurate.
That's not, that's not it. So we.
Actually, in, in some cases, and I think Gabriella said this as well, it could be significantly higher than that.
Yeah.
It could be as high as 10%.
I get it, but there's no disclosures on this slide that, that explain that. So it could be completely misleading.
Noted.
Because it says total pay increase budget for sworn police. It doesn't say average. It doesn't say portion. All these questions you're hearing here, the slide does not say that. So I just want to make sure we're really, really clear that we're, you know, what we're, what we're saying here. So we might want to, I don't know, change this.
Noted. I will make sure we're clear when we're communicating to the employees.
Yeah.
Okay. So I do have a slide that sort of illustrates this coming up next on extra efforts we're making for the police department. So one of the things we are, we did do or are recommending to do is to shorten their number of steps. So most of our pay grades, all of our pay grades in the civilian families or non-sworn have 12 steps, and they range from 2% to 3.75%. So employees who do get step increases can, can realize anywhere from 2% to 3 and 3/4%, 3 and 3/4% on top of the market adjustment. For our police officers, they are now at five steps. So you can see that each increase is about 7 and 3/4%. So that would be on top of the 4% that they're getting as a range adjustment overall. So those who are eligible for steps and are moving across the steps would receive that.
Sorry.
No problem.
Pay's very important to me, that we make sure we take care of our employees. On the steps, I'm not sure if all of us up here understand the steps. What qualifies somebody to get a step increase? Could you just, real quickly?
Yeah, the step system is a tenure-based system. So if you're here, you're hired, especially in the police department where they're very, they're very traditional. They bring everyone in at the same step one, unless they're a lateral police officer that has experience. So everyone begins at that recruitment level, and when they become a sworn officer, they start at step one, and that's the beginning of their, their probationary employment. And then after a year, if they're performing satisfactorily, if they're doing a good job, they move to the next step. And they keep doing that each year.
Is it every year, or every couple of years, or?
Every year, until they get to the top.
So they, for five years, they keep getting this increase. So in five years, I can make $110,000 plus whatever else.
I heard you say two things. I heard you say based on tenure, but I also heard there's merit involved. Can you talk more about that?
Yes, if the department head has the opportunity to withhold a step increase if there's performance issues. So if someone's on a performance improvement plan, that's typically when we see that. If, if performance is not up to satisfaction, the step increase is held back. And normally, they do receive it once they meet the requirements of the performance improvement plan.
Okay.
And so that's the performance-based. And then, it doesn't happen a lot in the police department, but in the civilian world, if someone is, it's the same thing, where the step can be withheld, but if they are performing exceptionally, the department head can also request additional consideration for exceptional performance.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question.
Yes.
So, because that's really frequent, the step program, and I guess I never realized it. When does the annual pay increase versus the step, or is it a combination of both?
The market rate comes in January, so that's at the beginning of each year with the budget. And the step anniversary can be anytime in the year. It really is focused on when they're hired. So if they're hired in May, they typically will get a raise again in the following May.
So if I'm in step three here, and I get a 4% increase, I'm trying to quickly do math here, and it takes me to say, I don't know what it, what we'll say, that would be roughly, what, maybe $100,000? I don't know. And then when my anniversary comes up in that same year, step four automatically get the difference?
Well, let me just, so if you start at step three, that's your pay. Well, let me just, so if you start at step three, that's your pay. That, that includes the adjustment that we're making for January already, so that would be your starting pay. And then, in, let's see, we're in October, so next October, you would advance to step four. You would get a 7%.
But January, I'd get a 4%, wouldn't I?
So, these, these individuals are getting 11.25% pay increase in a year.
But they get them at different times, so I'd get the-
Different times.
I'd get the 4% in January, and then I'd get my 7% on top of my 4%, so I could exceed step four.
Yes. That's right.
So, it's a percentage, not a dollar amount necessarily?
Yeah, it's, it's an equal percentage across the steps. The dollar amount will just be whatever the equivalent is, the monetary equivalent.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
That's good clarification.
All right. We are also, we do, so we have a police recruit. We had two pay grades for them, an entry level and then a secondary step for those who came with a little bit of background, and we've eliminated that first level so that everyone can come in at that more competitive second level, and that brings their entry level pay to $77,400. We are also continuing to offer the bachelor degree premium. We funded that through the tenure model, so as you know, all of our officers need to have bachelor's degrees, so they all receive this on top of that range, so it adds a little bit more to their pay. And we are continuing to offer career advancement through the Master Police Officer Program, where all of our officers have the ability to advance into another level through achievements and tenure, a combination of special assignments and things that the police chief and his department have deemed worthy of being a master police officer. We also implemented or are starting an employer referral program to help find officers. We're asking our employees to help us recruit them, and if they refer a candidate who is successfully hired, they will receive a bonus to help themselves.
Eligible for all employees?
Yes.
Okay. I won't be an employee.
Except for HR. HR doesn't count.
What's the amount of the employer referral program?
It's $500 if they're hired. The employee gets the $500, the employee who referred them gets $500 at the point of hire, and then if they complete their training program, they get another $500.
Okay, because that seems pretty low, just from looking at what salaries are, even just with the police force, for example, here, $500 seems, or $1,000 all in seems quite low. Is there other examples of $500 being an effective recruitment referral program?
We modeled our program after the other cities we studied that do a similar program, and so we tried to keep it within the same amount. Whether or not they're successful is yet to be determined. We don't have numbers for the other cities, and of course, we'll be measuring our success, and this is something, you know, we're kind of starting and piloting at this level, and we can always increase it or tweak it if we feel we need to.
I wonder, have we asked our fellow employees if, what is a reasonable number of how much we should give to a referral program that would incentivize you to recruit friends and family or such?
We have not surveyed our employees about this, but I do know that when our employees receive, they get excited about a $25 gift card, so I think that they would, they would appreciate this.
You know, I've had situations where I've referred people for jobs, you know, and don't expect any financial, you know, remuneration for that, so it seems like an appropriate number to me.
Thank you.
To kind of encourage the program.
Thank you, and of course, we will, we will monitor and make adjustments if we feel it's appropriate. All right.
Are you good with that, Ms. Ferre, for now?
Sure.
Okay. So, just a few more changes to the pay plan. These are, these are changes to jobs. So, every year, we evaluate jobs that have changed significantly, whether, you know, evolving over time or they've restructured a department. When a job changes significantly, the essential functions and the qualifications have a different market value or internal value. We call it a reclassification, and we had 13 of those this year, some of them in the middle of the year, some at the end of the year, and those are listed for you in your packet. You have a list of all of these. The job title changes are also similar, but they don't, they don't change market value. They just have a few differences in their jobs, and sometimes that requires a title change so that it's more appropriate to what's being done in the job or reflected in the market. And then, we added 14 new positions as part of the budget, and those have been included in the pay plan. And I just broke down here, seven of them are actual jobs that already exist and are just being extended, and then three grant-funded and four newly-funded. And those are listed in your packet as well. So, what does this all cost? The top there is the total budget for salaries and wages in the pay plan, and the cost to increase and make the recommendations we're making is approximately 3.5% for our market rate adjustments, 0.11% for our reclassifications, and it's just shy of 1.7% for step increases. And again, these are all market-driven, support our employer of choice philosophy, and can be funded through the tenure budget model, so we-
Ms. Mormon?
Yes, I had a specific question about a position that I didn't see listed as a new one, and I think it was presented, I want to say, back at our strategic planning retreat, the need for environmental regulation enforcement. And I know at the time, we talked about how we weren't going to do it then, and there was some, I think, good reasons for that and how we were handling that, but I guess I would just like an update on, it sounds like we're not doing it this time either, so I just was curious about what our plan is for that, meeting that need.
Okay. Can I call on my friends?
That position is not included. You are correct.
Correct.
And we plan to discuss that again at the next council strategic planning retreat. In the meantime, we are evaluating and ensuring regulatory compliance as we discussed at the last retreat. There is a lot more that can be done. It has not been included in this.
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Mariah?
Thank you. Gabriella, I have a question about, I see, you know, the stats on how this, you know, step increases and reclassifications, and all of those are up. Is there any mechanism in the work you do that looks at each job, the job that's actually being done and how it's classified and how it's paid and all that, that allows for market adjustments that are the other way if those exist in the market? I mean, does the market catch that, and does your, does your work catch those types of things?
It does, yeah. We, we look at every job individually each year based on market, and reclassifications often will be down instead of up. You'll see in your packet, it doesn't quite spell it out, but when you look at the pay grades, jobs might shift downward, and usually, they're vacant, so they don't impact an individual at that time. But it just happens that in the market we've been in for the last several years, we haven't seen job, market values go down, so you don't see that very often.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I will move on then to a little bit of introduction to a couple of other things we prioritized this year. This year, we were really focused on health and well-being and paid leave, so we'll talk a little bit about that. Our, one of my favorite things to talk about is our healthcare. We're just so incredibly successful and lucky, I guess, I'll just knock on wood here, but we have another year of flat increases for all of our health, dental, and vision. This will be the fifth year in a row that healthcare is not increasing. I just want to pause here for a moment of my glory.
What are you seeing in other communities in terms of what kind of increases?
More than this, for sure. And I was going to say, medical trend is not flat. Medical trend, the cost of medical care goes up an average of 6% to 7% every year, and so employers start, you know, depending on if you're fully insured or self-funded, a fully insured plan is likely to start around the 20, you know, double-digit numbers, and then they have to negotiate that down with their insurance company. And self-funded plans like ours, they're starting in that 7% range, and then they have to decide, you know, are they going to cut something? Are they going to pass the cost on to their employees more? And we haven't had to do that. We have such an incredible participation rate in our clinic, and our employees are really heeding the call to be responsible. So, we're just, you know, the secret sauce. I don't know exactly what the formula is, but we just keep doing what we're doing, and it's going well.
Well, I do think the secret sauce is our employees and how they've cooperated with the approach we've taken. I think, you know, councils can be commended for agreeing to do this, and it was a little bit of a stretch in terms of-
It was a leap of faith, for sure.
And it's been proven out to be, and so it's, frankly, it's freed up dollars that we're able to direct in other areas, so it's-
Yeah, that's 35% of medical increase you haven't had to fund.
Exactly. Ms. Mariah?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment similarly, as someone who has to buy their own healthcare in the free market with post-tax dollars, unlike lots of people, this is amazing, because I, you know, I see 5% to 20% increases year after year after year in the same environment where we've had no percentage increases, and I think it speaks to how well the city team runs this program, and then the individual employees within the city, how they participate in the plan, and particularly taking, taking charge of their own health and delivering such a positive result. It's a, it's a huge feather in your cap, and congratulations on doing it and keep doing it.
Thank you.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you, yeah. I echo the comments of my colleagues, and then I also wanted to commend us for adding infertility coverage into our health plan. That's a huge game changer for a lot of people. I personally have had relationships, I'm sure we've all had, with close friends who have had to go through this, and it is exorbitantly expensive. And so, this makes family planning possible for so many people where it otherwise wouldn't be, so I commend us for adding that. And then, I also had a question about the extended care leave, and maybe this would go under disability benefits, but do we have anything for either a mental health leave or, for instance, I had a former colleague whose child was undergoing intensive cancer treatment, and obviously, that, that parent isn't able to work. Do we have anything that covers those kinds of situations?
So, this new program will cover that.
Wonderful.
So, I, before we move to that, I want to just mention a little bit about that.
I've got two more questions up here, and then we'll get to that. Ms. Fiverr?
Well, I know it's early in your presentation, but I've been doing that all night, so I just remember Linda bringing this to us, I don't know how many years ago, and, and that's why there's been always a high expectation from me, because you set that bar high, of the innovation and the creativity to create, you know, for, I agree with the mayor, we took a leap of faith in this idea with you all, and it has paid off. And the biggest thing that I know, I always worry about coming here, is not everyone makes a lot of money here. Sometimes working for the city is not always, you know, the six-digit, all the bonuses, and you don't get that here. But one of the areas is our benefits and keeping our premiums low, and there is an attraction when you have healthcare services remain this low, and I think that those that are, you know, leaving are probably, could reflect that, shoot, my insurance is a lot higher at this other place. I might make more money, but my benefits are also higher.
Yes.
So, anyone who's thinking of leaving, think about all of those costs.
Yes, please do.
Including, well, I didn't pay FICA, but that's one thing for stay, is you got to pay FICA if we don't pay FICA. So, anyways, that's, that's one, and I had another good one, and I couldn't remember it now, it escaped me, but I'll come back here in a minute to share.
Ms. Jones?
So, I was just going to validate, from a private sector, we're self-funded and we're a 7% increase. So, all the things that Mr. Fiverr said about total compensation, it's, that's a real thing, and hopefully, everybody's really looking at their total compensation and what that means, and healthcare is a huge part of that. So, just validating your, one of your statistics-
Thank you.
-in the private sector, that 7% is real.
I did remember what I wanted to say. I want to thank you all for culture. Culture's not easy to change, and I know this is a cultural thing within the city, I was going to say the community, but the city team. Being able to embrace it, encourage it, change it, and get everyone to go to the clinic and just do the little things, and having that quality health, the well-being, that's a culture thing, and I don't think people realize how hard it is to create a culture that changes like that. So, I just want to applaud you on that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, now you can talk about dental coverage.
Does anyone want to know what Right Start for Kids is? It's a 100% covered dental coverage, so your cavities, your heavy dental work that usually only gets covered at 50%. This program for children under 13 and under covers it all 100%. So, this is a really great, you were mentioning, you know, the employees who don't make a lot of money, and a lot of them have to forego dental care for their kids because of that, and this, this is going to put more smiles on those kids' faces, I think. So, we're really happy to do that. Okay, so extended care leave, I'm also, I sent, I passed out a handout. Councilmember Mormon asked for a comparison, so I'm happy to talk about that now, or as part of the personnel rules update, you let me know.
Why don't you do it now?
Okay. So, we are introducing a new program. We're calling it Extended Care Leave. It is really focusing on, on care overall, and this answers, Councilmember Simpson, your question about all types of serious health conditions, illness, injury, mental health, and even pregnancy and childbirth, and extending on to taking care of that child and bonding with the child in the first year. And so, this program, along with, you know, adoption and foster care placement as well, and any, taking care of, preparing for a family member who is being deployed into the military, and then anything related to domestic violence safety. This program allows for up to 12 weeks of paid leave for those reasons, and if you want to take a look at that comparison sheet, let me find mine. What did I do with it? This sheet actually takes you through a side-by-side comparison of the Colorado Family Leave Act or insurance program, and then what ARVADA is doing. So, the leave is the same, 12 weeks of partially paid leave, and in cases of complications of childbirth or pregnancy, an additional four weeks is available. The family benefit indicates that it will pay up to 90% of an employee's wages on a sliding scale, and it maxes out at $1,100 per week. So, I did the math for our average, and I looked at everyone's earnings, and that's going to cover anywhere from 21% to, what does that say, 85% wages for our employees, depending on their income. And the, on average, it's, the average employee's going to get about 67% of their salary covered. On the ARVADA side, we are shooting to cover 100% of the salary, a combination of using their own paid sick leave for the first couple of weeks, and then the remaining 10 weeks are paid in full at 100%. So, 90 to 100% of the salary would be covered for the full 12 weeks.
I have a question about the using up your sick leave to start that program, but first, I want to thank you for doing this.
Sure.
I appreciate your quick response. So, I'm, I try to use up my vacation as fast as I can. I believe it's important for my own health and my family. So, I, I am concerned, though, that a person finds a situation, they already used up their vacation, and now they're in dire straits with a health situation. So, how would that be handled?
So, we anticipate most employees will use their sick leave balances and not have to take vacation time from their balance. So, we do offer both. We offer a vacation program and a leave, a sick leave program, and we believe that employees, currently, most of them accrue quite, they accrue 96 hours of sick leave per year, and they are able to bank that year over year. So, most of them have a balance they can draw from-
Okay.
...for those first two weeks. Where was I? Oh, eligibility. So, the family plan allows any Colorado worker who's earned at least $2,500 in wages to participate in the plan, independent of who they work for or how long, recognizing that they might have multiple employers. So, they don't put a time limit on, on how long you have to work somewhere. We decided to put a timeframe on it for really just management and administrative reasons. We want to make it as seamless as possible to work with FMLA, and so we decided to follow FMLA guidance on that and ask that employees be with the city for at least a year and work 1,250 hours. However, for those new hires who don't have that yet, we have extended what we call a sick leave advance, where they can get up, you know, up to eight weeks of leave for these types of conditions in their first year of employment when they haven't quite applied or become eligible for this leave yet. So, that's our answer to that gap there. Qualifying conditions are the same, so everything that family covers, we will cover. Qualifying conditions are the same, so everything that family covers, we will cover. Family members, we're going to make this available to the employee and their child, parent, spouse or domestic partner. Family is a little more generous in their definition. We think that our sick leave, again, employees can use their sick leave for other family members in the same way that family and the Healthy Families and Workplaces Act allows them to. So because they're able to bank a generous amount of leave, we felt that that was appropriate.
Excuse me, I just had a question. During the time that they're taking off for any of these qualifying events, will they accrue any sick or vacation leave?
Yes, they'll continue to accrue their leave during their leave.
All right, thank you.
Sure. All right. Both of them offer job protection, so if someone's on this leave, their job is protected and held for them. They do also get to continue their benefits coverage during that time. And the last part here is the cost. So family is, you know, all in. You either, you do or you don't. So if we were, if we opted in, our employees would all have to opt in without a choice and they would pay a percentage of their premium. So I just listed it here, what the average employee would pay about $400 per year to receive family benefits. Whereas our plan, we're not charging, there's no cost to the employee and they can choose, they still can choose to participate in family if they want to. So it truly is a choice for them.
Mr. Jones?
All right. Oh, yes.
Just a comment and a question. So if they choose to present or to participate in family and in the extended care leave, can they double dip?
Not really, no. Family will not pay more than 100% of their salary. So they'll look at what we're doing-
Okay.
...and then balance that out. But they may also have, if employees have more than one job, they may be able to get benefits for those other jobs.
Makes sense. And then my comment is, I really appreciate that the city team looked at this to find a better solution for the city employees so that there was no cost to them and really gives them, I think, better benefit. So, well, job well done.
Thank you. Councilmember Mormon, you had also asked for a breakdown of our current. So on the back of the flyer, you can see what our current leave benefits are. So you'll see there the breakdown of vacation, sick leave and paid holidays and floating holidays. So vacation, sick leave and floating holidays, employees can use those with their supervisor's approval at their discretion. So sick leave is, you know, for the reasons dictated in the personnel rules or in our policies, but vacation and floating holidays can be for just about anything. So they're able to take that with their scheduling approval. Paid holidays are typically going to be given on the holidays themselves, but some employees who have to work on those days can bank those hours and use them later. And then we also have some really unique programs for when employees are in a real dire place and in their time of need. We're able to offer an advance for new hires when they haven't quite accrued enough leave. We used to offer 96 hours of advance and we still offer that for just about every reason someone can use sick leave. And then we are making an adjustment to offer up to eight weeks for those really serious conditions. We also have a sick leave bank. So when someone's faced with a life-threatening condition, either themselves or a close family member, we usually see this in cases of cancer or a childbirth complication, we can extend them a great amount of leave to get them through this tough time. And so that's available as well. And then we always have an administrative leave option that is up to the appointing authorities discretion. And in consultation with HR, we apply that when something comes up we just didn't think of, our policies don't cover it and it's a real emotional challenge for that employee. It's in the best interest of the city to support that employee, retain them, keep them productive, give them peace of mind and we have that available as well.
Mr. Mormon?
Just a quick question on the paid sick leave line. So the current benefit could go up to 1040 hours and we're dropping that to 640 now? Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. I meant to talk about that. So we are intending to balance out the extended care leave. Originally, our accrual was so high because the city didn't have a short-term disability program. So we wanted employees to be able to bank up to six months of leave. Now that we're offering this new program, we felt we needed to balance that out a little bit. And so this new leave is available to them every year, a fresh, you know, availability. And so we felt we needed to drop that maximum accrual, so we didn't give too much and there wasn't, you know, hours and hours of leave out there being banked. So employees who currently have more than that now are going to be able to keep those balances? They're just gonna kind of freeze there until they drop down to the new maximum.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else here?
Nope, we're good.
All right. I think, almost done with this. I just wanted to highlight some of the work we're doing into the following year. 2024 is a new budget year for us, new programs that we might focus on. Of course, we've got this huge Workday implementation ahead of us that we're gonna be very busy on and we're surveying our employees. We, in order to really understand what they value and prioritize our rewards, we ask them in a total rewards survey every two years. And then we're also doing our employee engagement survey this fall, which is that top workplace survey. So we'll have two really good pieces of data that we can use to really prioritize how we shape our rewards into the future. And then those are some of the things we have already heard is important, continuing to offer flexible and hybrid work with service level guidelines. So we want to make sure that if we can continue to offer this to our employees, that there are service level expectations being met so that people are getting their work done productively, phones are being answered and those types of things. So we're working towards those improvements in the spring. And we continue to focus on well-being, what we call lifestyle benefits. It's an inclusive way to offer rewards that employees can choose from, so they can choose what's most important to them. And we're looking into bilingual skills to better serve our community as it grows more and more diverse and ways to retain employees through longevity, retirement options and a safe environment.
Mr. Jones?
Another shameless plug, but the Workday implementation, as painful as it might be, the reward on the other side for the employee, the associate, is great.
Thank you.
We use Workday. It was a painful implementation and integration and it took a lot of work and a lot of heavy lifting, but our associates have a view into their total compensation world that they've never had before. And so it's very, very good.
We're looking forward to it.
We'll probably clip this for an employee announcement.
It's worth, it's worth, it's worth the pain to get there. And there's so many other tools.
All right. Well, that ends the pay plan update. I have a few more things to talk about. It's okay. Do you need to introduce me again, Mayor?
No, no, we still know you're the same person.
All right. So personnel rules. Let me pull that out. It's in here. Okay, so Chapter 70 of the city's code contains our personnel rules and we're making some updates, we're recommending updates to comply with amendments to state law. And then while we're at it, we've decided to also clean up, do some housekeeping. So we'll talk through those changes with you. So most of the changes to amendments to law surround the Colorado Equal Pay for Equal Work Act and the Healthy Families and Workplaces Act. The state made some significant changes in those laws, so we've updated many sections of our rules. And then there's a lot of housekeeping. So you all have a redlined version of the rules and then a clean version and you'll see a lot of red. And I want you to not panic. Most of it is housekeeping. We've done a lot of work with our legal team to make sure the rules look good. They're formatted well, the bullets line up. There's cleanup of language that might be outdated. And by outdated, I mean like beeper pay. We've updated some language there and-
We're not using beepers anymore?
No, we're not. There's also a lot of redundancy. There's things that are repeated in multiple sections and it gets a little bit tough to really find it all when we're trying to, if we can just update it once and then refer to where it's located, we've done a lot of that work. So you'll see big sections removed, but it's really just because it's referencing another place where it's found. And then we did do some cleanup of language that's very procedural. If it's, if it's required by a state law or it's in a policy, we refer to that instead of the, instead of putting all of that in the rules because it tends to change a lot and we don't want to keep coming, I mean, we love coming here, but we don't want to bug you with all of the changes we have to make every time. So we reference where to find that in the city policy. And then we added a few sections to reference existing practices that aren't currently in the rules. So what I'm gonna do today is I just, I don't want to go through every red line, but I'm gonna focus on the substantial changes. If I don't talk about them, there're going to probably be more of these housekeeping issues, but feel free to interrupt me if there's something I didn't cover that you want more information on. So I'm gonna go by article and Article 1 doesn't have substantial changes, just a few housekeeping updates, so skip over that one. Article 2 is our employment section. First big change we made is all of those definitions, terms that keep popping up all over the place. We added a definitions and employment, we changed the employment status to definitions and employment status and we added several definitions to that section so we could just refer back to that definition wherever it shows up in the personnel rules. The section on job vacancy and interviewing, we removed sections that are no longer compliant with the Equal Pay Act. Many of the amendments to the act this year were around job postings. It's very important to the state that we post every opportunity before we hire someone. All of our employees need to know about it. So we removed language that allowed for placement of people into jobs without posting. So that's mainly what that's about. Under the probationary period section, we took out a section that allowed for employees who work in a temporary job and get hired onto the city to skip a portion of their probationary period. We felt that this created inequity and no longer really works. Not something we actually practiced very much either. And we do have an opportunity that supervisors can release them early from probation after six months of good performance, so we'd rather follow that policy. And then evaluation dates after probation. Employees will be evaluated at the end of their probation period and then they'll flow into the annual calendar when everyone else is evaluated at the same time. So we just wanted to clarify that as well. The reemployment section, this is again just explaining what a rehire status, what employees receive when they're rehired after a certain length of time, if they've resigned or are laid off, they're able to come back to the city as a rehire and retain some of their benefits if they come back within a certain amount of time. And employees who are terminated for cause are not eligible, so we just wanted to clarify that in those sections. All right, compensation, obviously a big section for the Equal Pay Act. We clarified some language in our pay plan and classification just to make sure it's compliant with Equal Pay Act expectations. Appointment rates, we used to have different ways of handling appointments when, or job offers, when people are transferred versus promoted versus demoted or we, we now handle them all the same way. We're very consistent with the way we place people for equity reasons. And so this now just really removed those independent or individual explanations and replaced it with a consistent practice. We also removed language referring to disciplinary fines. We don't think that's compliant with the Equal Pay Act. We can't drop someone's pay for performance reasons, so we took that out. Pay increases again are now handled very equitably. We do believe that at some point, we're going to need to move to an annual pay increase date rather than step anniversaries. So we put some language in there allowing the city manager to make that decision in a future update for better compliance with the Equal Pay Act. And again, same with the next section, removing the individual definitions of what is, how pay is treated with a transfer, promotion, demotion, they're all treated the same now. Reduction of wages, removing disciplinary fines from that section. And on-call pay, we updated the language at beeper pay. And we removed a lot of the procedural information and referenced the city policy where it's Attendance and leave, this is probably where you'll see most of the red. This section is very red because we took all that sick leave language and left it with the policy. We're creating a policy that really details how all of these things work in accordance with the Healthy Families and Workplaces Act and our new extended care leave. So the sick leave policy in all of its sections now reads that it will be provided to employees in accordance with state and federal law and with the city manager's policy. And the policy will reference all the things we talked about today.
Mr. Jones?
I know I've asked this question before and you've answered it, but I forgot the answer. Is there a reason why we don't just call it personal time off as opposed to sick and vacation or?
We, moving to a PTO, converting to a PTO is something we've talked about, but it requires a lot of research and a lot of understanding of what that might look like for our employees. And so we just haven't had the resources to complete that work. So currently it is separated and there's so many schools of thought around how to, you know, why you should do it one way or why you should do it the other way. And just to be honest, we haven't fully vetted that as a decision yet.
Hopefully sometime you'll be able to go down that path because it seems, at least again, it just is so much easier to understand and you don't then have to have all of these rules around why you're taking this type of leave or this type of leave. So food for thought.
Thank you. So same thing with the medical, there's leaves for domestic violence, fatigue leave, facility closure, all of these have a company policy that really goes in depth into how it works. So we have referenced those in the rules, so we don't have them in two different places that have to be continuously updated. Leave of absence without pay, we needed to clarify what happens if someone takes a leave of absence without pay without approval. So if they go AWOL, they could be subject to discipline if they just kind of disappear on us without approval of their supervisor. And then we added a section to introduce extended care leave so that it's available and references the policy that we're developing. Halfway through. The section on employer responsibilities has to do with conduct, discipline, discharge, clarified language here. So every single employee at the city is subject to our conduct rules, whether they're a regular employee or a seasonal variable hour employee, but they are treated different in terms of their status. So seasonal and variable hour employees are considered at will. They don't have the progressive discipline rights that our regular employees have. So we just wanted to clarify that that's, that's the difference, but they are all required to follow our standards of conduct. We added additional protected classes to our sections on abusive treatment or disrespect and added marijuana as a controlled substance, explaining how investigations are to be handled if someone comes to work under the influence or uses it while at work. The discipline and discharge section added language about how to handle employees who are charged with a felony while they're still awaiting their court proceedings. And we removed language about disciplinary fines again because those are no longer going to be available. Under the drugs and alcohol section, again, we just addressed marijuana while at work being under the influence or use of. And then there's a section, a brand new section we introduced about criminal charges and convictions during employment. So if an employee is charged with something, it's, you know, explaining their responsibility to report criminal charges or convictions and then the appointing authorities' responsibility for how to handle such matters in the employment world. Under Article 6, employer, employer relations, we just again cleaned up language about disciplinary fines. And then under Article 7, separation- And then under Article seven, separation and termination, we addressed what to do with employees returning. We need them to return city property when they leave. So we are asking that they do that upon their last day of work or before and how to handle that. There was a big section on retiree health benefits that applied to employees who were here back in 2002, which is no longer needed, so we took that out. And then we addressed recall status. If if someone is laid off, they're able to return to the city and apply for a job as an internal applicant. But they can they cannot be placed into a job without the job being posted anymore. So we just made sure we clarified that they can be eligible for rehire, but can't just be placed in a job without going through the process. And then how pay and benefits are handled. That's pretty much it. I think that's it. The rest of this was going to cover the extended care leave and sick leave, which we already talked about. So if you have more questions, I'm happy to take them, but I think I'm at the end here.
Good. Lisa, Ms. Ferre, anything from you?
Nope.
Very good. I don't see any other questions up here. Thank you. A lot of hard work.
Thank you so much.
This will come back before City Council on the 16th of October for implementation.
Yes.
Okay, that then moves us into our Water, Wastewater and Stormwater 2024 Rate and Fee Recommendations Workshop. And Sharon Israel is going to lead us in this.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I am excited to be returning to you to talk about our water, wastewater and stormwater utility rate and fee recommendation.
Okay, you just lost all credibility by saying you're excited to be back with us on this, so.
You know, Mr. Mayor and council, you may recall that I'm a longtime resident of Arvada. I've been here 18 years and I'm also certified in many ways as a water nerd.
Okay, fine. You've reestablished your credibility. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, we we had presented a recommendation to council on September 18th. And as you may recall, we heard feedback and questions and some specific requests on presenting additional data and some of the analysis behind our recommendation. So I want to give a shout out to our IT data and analytics team, our engineering team, our utilities business team, our finance team, our communications team. Really put our heads together over the last couple of weeks to prepare tonight's workshop. We hope that you'll see that is responsive to the requests for information and questions we presented on the 18th. So really, there's a lot more detail in here and let's let's dig in. What we heard is that council asked for information about what projects are currently being funded, updates on previously funded projects, data on cash flow, some information on what a more constrained budget impact would look like. So we're going to walk through that tonight. I did want to remind everyone that the rates and fees that we'll talk about are for three individual enterprise funds. So we do have an enterprise fund, one for water, one for sewer and one for stormwater. And those are three separate buckets of money that we don't mix with with other funding sources. And the rates and fees we collect, which we'll be talking about this evening, go to pay for repair and replacement of our aging infrastructure and our operations. So this, the rates and fees piece of our overall revenue is our only source of revenue for that kind of reinvestment work. So we'll we'll be on through the slides and telling you more. I also want to point out each of you should have four handouts and we'll be referring to those through the presentation. Three of the handouts are for CIP projects prioritized by fund. And then one handout is our engineering team's Gantt chart looking backward and forward just to give you an idea about what projects we're currently delivering. So next slide. Thanks, Candace. So we will start with an overview of our infrastructure, what we're talking about tonight in terms of what we need to take care of. I am going to recap our level of service goals, which we started talking about about two years ago. We will recap the 2024 rate and fee recommendation. Just as a reminder, council, from a timing perspective, approved that on first reading last week. And the next business meeting coming up next Monday, we're calendared for a second reading of the rate and fee ordinance along with a public hearing next week. So we'll talk about recapping that and provide some additional details that council had asked for. And then we'll be digging into some of the the specific projects, some more of the financial data that council had also requested. So next slide, please. So here's some metrics and numbers just to give everyone a scale of the magnitude of the infrastructure that we're taking care of. We maintain our rates and fees again to operate right operations, but also repair and replacement projects. We've got over 40,000 customers. We've got over 100 full-time employees that that make this work. We treat six and a half billion gallons of water. That includes water for fire protection. That includes water for indoor use in our homes and businesses. It also provides water to support beautiful landscapes, especially in the summertime. We've got 11 storage tanks, seven pump stations, over 1,200 miles of piped lines for our water and sewer system. So just a lot of of things that are invisible to most, but this is this is our world when we're talking about what we're taking care of. Next slide, please. This is a slide I don't think that we've showed council before in this context, but we thought it's really helpful to understand why we are where we are in terms of caring for all those assets. So this chart is a growth of Arvada's population from 1910 to 2020. And you can see that our population in that blue circle had a very large increase, a rapid increase, starting around 1950 and for the next 30 years. And the reason that that's important in the context of our infrastructure is the city made massive investments in water, sewer and storm infrastructure as the city was was going through that very quick development phase, relatively quick over those 20 to 30 years. That's also a time when the Safe Drinking Water Act and Clean Water Act were enacted at the federal level and there's a lot of federal money coming in. So a lot of our infrastructure that we use today was originally built in that time of rapid growth for the city. It also means that it's nearing or at the end of its lifespan. And so from a timing perspective, we've got a lot of work to do to reinvest. The next slide, please. Our engineering team took a look at all of our water, wastewater and stormwater assets and looked at what would it take to replace it if we were going to build a city today. I'm a big SimCity 2000 fan from back in the day and put all your infrastructure in the ground and it's expensive. We've done this work to just estimate if we were going to build it today's replacement value, not upgrade to current standards. We're at $4.5 billion of physical infrastructure value, not including our water rates portfolio. 2.4 billion of that is our water infrastructure, water lines, water storage, water treatment plants. Our wastewater collection system, including lift stations and pipes, is at 1.2 billion. And our stormwater infrastructure is like 840 million, mostly gravity pipes. So this is the this is the level of investment that we've made as a community over time. Next slide, please. So this is also a new set of data that we hadn't previously presented to council, but I think it tells a story, so I'm going to walk through this as well. On the Y axis, that vertical axis, it is the remaining useful life of a given asset. And then along the horizontal X axis is the percentage of our assets by number, by count, that are at that percentage of useful life. So if you look at the shape of the curve, you'll see at the bottom left, there's a flat line right along that zero years of useful life and it goes to about 30%. So what that means is that if you look at our overall asset inventory across all three of our water, sewer, storm functions, we estimate that about 30% of those assets are at the end of their useful life today. And and if we were to do nothing to reinvest, this this also tells us that in 10 years, we would be at 40% of our assets at the end of their life. And then in 15 years, we would be at 50% or half of our assets at the end of their life. So this this I think shows a certain urgency. Projects of the scale we're talking about with water, sewer and stormwater infrastructure, they do take years planned and to design and to construct. So we're we're at an important point where, remember going back to that population graph, we had all that major investment in a period of time. What we're seeing in terms of our condition and lifespan left, that there's a lot more to do. So a next slide, please. So we also think about this not just in terms of the age and the design life of the assets, but the level of service we want to provide to the community. And we started this this initiative about two years ago out of our engineering team, really defining in writing what our level of service goals are. And this includes things like service outages. We don't, we want to prevent service outages completely. We don't want to be in a position where the city is ever not able to provide safe drinking water. So we also have resiliency goals. We have water quality goals. We've got requirements and goals for fire flow. Our system is used by our Arvada Fire for firefighting and that is where we get the largest demand of flows at a given point in our system. We also have in there goals around development, being able to support planned development at the pace it's coming into the city. And then also summer irrigation demand. We have a, are there Vado Water Treatment Plant that only runs in the summertime and it's specifically operated so that we can provide the the summer irrigation demand for customers. So what we've found is that by defining these levels of service, it also helps us as we're prioritizing projects, identifying which ones are the most most critical. So next slide, please. I, you know, I wanted to also share that that we're in a position now that this isn't just theoretical. This is just a bit of a laundry list of some of the major failures that we've seen year to date in our systems. And I'm not going to read everyone to you, but they include chemical feed failures. We've had control system failures. We've had electrical system failures. Currently have a pump down at the Spring Mesa Pump Station. There is a lot of reactive work that we're doing. The good news is that we have an outstanding operations team and they've responded with professionalism and talent and real care and love for the system, keeping it running. And so our customers never knew that we were potentially at risk of that level of service decline. But this kind of paints a picture, I think, of, you know, we're reactive a lot of the time on on some of this aging infrastructure. And I thought you might be interested to hear this too. Out of October 2nd, year to date, our team responded to 327 after-hours calls. Our team has staff available 24/7, 360/5 for all different kinds of issues that our customers may see, waterline breaks, leaks, emergency utility locates. So 327 so far this year. So next slide, please. But I want to assure you that I am not here to tell you that the sky is falling. I do want to assure you that what we're presenting and what we believe the rates and fee recommendations support is that we have a plan to keep the lights. And it's a good plan and it is a good path we're on. And a large reason for that is that the city council gave a strategic direction in 2019 to develop a long-term master plan to address, first of all, identify challenges like this, get organized, come up with an implementation plan for making progress. And this is, this gave us clarity on how to take what the situation we're in in terms of condition of assets and and really understand what our needs are and and move us forward. Next slide, please. Also, last year, the city, the city council added a strategic result around overall citywide financial resiliency. And again, these strategic results, this one has given us additional direction. We need to problem solve our aging infrastructure challenges. We're really looking at what our community needs through through this lens as well. Next slide, please. So this is a timeline of of that work on the strategic planning side. So you can see here from 2019, we started to get reports coming in. Late 2019 was our water distribution system report. Mid 2020, we saw a report on our, this is on master planning, our treatment system. We did some updates and more refining late 2021 and into 2022 on stormwater and wastewater side. So that, around the year ago or so is when we really started pushing for, okay, we have these findings. We know we've got the aging assets. We know we've got the demand for capacity. How are we going to implement this? And again, implementation being an integral part of the city council's strategic plan. Next slide, please. All right, so so on top of that work over the last couple of years, we've been working with the team and city council on a financial strategy, knowing that we would need additional resources to close gaps that we were finding. So after the master plans or around the time we were doing master plans in 2021, we started bringing forth the city council some initial financial strategy concepts, rates and fees being part of that, but not the only source of resource and revenue to be able to support what we needed to do. We're also really looking closely at at criticality, you know, what projects are the most critical. That is part of what we'll talk about with the handouts in front of you tonight. But what we're trying to do in terms of balancing our our aging infrastructure and and also the the need for supporting planned development. So some of the revenue sources that we've talked about, this, there is this annual rate and fee adjustment, which is which is part of our rhythm in the budget each year. In 2022, we started adjusting bimonthly service fees for the first time in about 10 years. We worked with the city council this year to update system development charges that are part of a revenue source for us to support planned development, charged for growth, paying for growth. That was effective earlier this month. We also worked with council last year on two debt issues, bond issues for water and sewer. That was, it provided us a combined $100 million of cash coming in. And then we're also continuing to look at what bonds and low-interest loans and and grants might look like. Specifically, the bipartisan infrastructure bill. We have our projects on the state revolving fund list, which is the mechanism by which that federal bipartisan infrastructure bill money is coming in for water, sewer and storm infrastructure. The state revolving fund eligibility list enables us to qualify for low-interest loans that are offered through the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority. We we did do bonds in the last issue, but these low-interest loans are also potentially a good option for us. So as we look forward the next 18 months or so, we're going to see if any of those are a good fit. We're also currently working with the Bureau of Reclamation on some funds that are available through grants for water efficiency. We are hopeful that some of that grant funding may be able to help us support smart meters in particular. You've heard me talk about smart meters in the past. And anywhere we can find grant money to help offset our costs, we're trying to do that. So next slide, please. Okay, so that's all some. Okay, so that's all some recap and background here. We're going to dig into the financial recommendations and data now. So back in April of last year, we provided a few considerations for options for council, looking for direction on a lot of this balancing of aging infrastructure and development needs. So the roadmap is the term that we started using that allows us to both keep the lights on at a relatively reduced risk of failure, keep, you know, really making a dent in that, the list of assets that are at the end of their useful life and then also supporting planned development. So really, I'll distinguish that one from the other options just for comparison because I think they're still, they're still something to consider, but the risks are really problematic. If we extend the schedule, we are going to be in a position where things will get more expensive to do and we will run the risk of not providing level of service. So either an extended schedule or, or really keeping our rates low, lower than they, they need to be to support reliability are, they're the other two options we, we did talk about last year and the direction we got from council was that we really didn't want to go that way. We have yet to find infrastructure that will heal itself. Maybe that's coming with robots or AI at some point in the future, but, but right now, because the system is in the condition it's in, we, we just don't have a lot, we don't have anything to cut. We just have things that we could postpone. So by choosing the roadmap here, you know, I believe that we are, continue down this road, balancing, you know, the cost of delaying versus short-term savings in the most, you know, logical and appropriate and responsible way possible. So next slide please. So we, we had presented again on September 18th, the recommendation, it was passed on first reading last week. So let's talk about those details and dig into it. Next slide. So again, leading with the roadmap, I'm going to walk through this slide because I'm hopeful that it answers some of the questions council had raised over the last couple of weeks. Let's just walk through water sewer and storm one at a time. So our overall recommendation for the water fund was to increase rates and fees so that we would be able to receive an additional 4.78 million in new revenue. Do you remember that billion dollar number I talked about a few minutes ago? I want to put this in perspective because in no world is $5 million a small amount of money. It is also a very small amount of the value of our total assets. So just, I wanted to put those zeros in context. The increase would be point two, less than 0.2% of our total asset value for water. The recommended increase, this is what the customers would see combined is 14.5%. In the roadmap last year, we were estimating 12 to 14%, so we're about half a percent higher than that in this recommendation, but very, very close to where we thought we would be last year. So that is a combination of a 12% volumetric rate increase and a $4 bimonthly service fee increase to raise that additional 4.78 million. On the sewer side, moving to the sewer fund, we're seeking revenue, additional revenue of $2.1 million and that increase is a very small amount of our overall asset value, less than 0.2% again. For the recommendation total of increase, that's what our customers would see, that combined is 13.7%. That's 12% volumetric and $2 bimonthly. And then the stormwater side, this is a very small, relatively small amount of money that we're looking for in new revenue. I do want to point out that this is partly an artifact of where we are in our financial strategy, planning for the stormwater fund. We started with water and sewer as priorities. The stormwater fund also has critical needs to help from a flood, flood perspective, flood management perspective and an environmental water quality perspective, but we aren't quite as far along in terms of strategy. So this is a relatively small amount, less than 0.02% of the total asset value. And this year, we're just recommending a 5% increase and then I'll raise about $200,000. So I'm going to hop to the next slide because I think the next few will show you in more detail what this means as a practical matter for our customers like myself and all of us and where the money is going. So under the recommended rate and fee increase for next year, a typical single family home would pay an additional $130 for the year. That's a little less than $11 a month. And you can see there how that split between water sewer and storm. The increase is about 36 cents a day. I don't want to make light of this being a significant increase on the percentage side. What this does, I'll remind you, is give us the, the funds that we are looking for to be able to do targeted reinvestment of all of our assets. So this recommendation would allow us to continue to provide reliable clean water and place for toilets to flush and make sure that we've got, continue to have a great stormwater, flood and environmental management. Next slide please. We added a little bit of data to these charts. The charts are the same ones that you saw September 18th. So the bars themselves haven't changed, but we added a few data points just to put this in context. So this is similar to before, we're going to talk about water sewer and storm individually. So this is for the water bill for a single family home. The water bill would be going from 561 a year to 642 for the year if the rate and fees recommended are adopted. This is below the area average of 669. And as you may recall, when we've presented this type of data before, the, the other communities that we're comparing to, these are their 2023 rates. I think a lot of folks are like us, trying to figure out what 2024 looks like. Next slide please. So this is the same set of information, but on the sewer side. So what we're proposing is to go from $318 a year to $364 a year, slightly higher than the area average on sewer, but, but less than, less than $10 for the year. Next slide please. And then on the stormwater side, as you may recall from our last presentation, we're significantly below the area average. This is an area where we know we've got major capital needs, but we're still working on what that financial strategy will be. So our, our recommendation this year is a very modest 5% increase. So go from $56 a year to $59 a year. And again, these funds help us with, with projects related to flood, flood control and stormwater management that protects environmental water quality in the streams. Next slide please. So one of the questions that we heard clearly from council last time was help, help us understand, help us, we'd like you to do some more storytelling about the projects that we're talking about. Where is this money going to go? So next slide please. This is where I'm going to refer us to the three handouts that have the blue bar at the top, if you want to take a look at them for reference. What we did was take a look at our 10-year model. One of those sheets is for the water fund projects, one is for the sewer fund projects and one is for the stormwater fund projects. Those projects are ranked by criticality. So what I hope this does is help do a better job of explaining which projects are the ones that are the most important on this list. Just to give you a little bit of sort of a context on the color coding, the gray projects, the projects that are colored in gray are in progress and/or they're funded completely from development fees. So we wanted to really tell the rate and fee story with this chart. The gray ones aren't impacted by a rate and fee decision. The projects listed in red or colored in red are the ones that we consider most critical. And our definition for that is it would impact more than one pressure zone in the city, could or will result in a tier one regulatory violation, which is related to public health. And, and then also on the stormwater side, address that public safety, a known public safety risk. We've got a couple of projects in there that are orange. Those are ones that would potentially impact more than one pressure zone in the city and, and then potentially result in a tier three violation, which is a lower level of violation with the state. And then not necessarily an immediate impact for, to public safety on the stormwater side. And then the projects in yellow would not result in a violation and they would have a relatively small number of people impacted. But all of these projects are on the list because we consider them being keep the lights on projects. The, the slide before you, I wanted to show also because you've heard me talk a lot about rates and fees, funding redevelopment, or sorry, reinvestment and then system development charges, funding growth paying for itself. So what these pie charts show, on the left is a water, on the water side of our overall CIP projects that, that you can see on the list, about a third of them are growth related, a third of the total cost is growth related. Two thirds on the water fund side is, is reinvestment projects. A lot of that growth related money is specifically earmarked for the gross reservoir expansion project, which will be completing payments for here in the next few years. On the wastewater side, this is where a lot, a lot more of our funds are going to growth related projects and specifically the trunk lines, both the north trunk line and the central trunk line need to be expanded so we can make sure that the sewer is big enough for all that great development coming into the city. So we're more like 50% there on growth related funds and then the R and R projects, which again are rate and fee funded are 42%. So I, what I'd like to do is, let's go to the next slide please, Kenneth. I want to, now that you've got that, that picture of all of the capital projects color coded by, by criticality, I want to talk about what that means from a cash flow and rate and fee policy decision. So go to the next slide please. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk through the water fund, the sewer fund and the stormwater fund separately. A reminder that the rates and fees are the policy discussion tonight, but what I hope that these next few slides do or serve to respond to some of the issues and questions that we heard from council on September 18th about, well, what about the other money? You know, what about the other context here from the financial strategy? So, so this has a lot going on in this slide, but it also tells a lot of stories. I'm going to walk through it. What this shows is for the water fund for 2023, 2024, 2025 and 2026. So that's this budget cycle and the next one, how our expenditures are being paid for from different buckets of money. So at the bottom of each bar, you can see the blue bar, that's the revenue we're expecting to come in from system development charges. So that's related to growth. The red is rates and fees. So that's how much of our expenditure is being paid for rates and fees. Green is cash balance. So that's fund balance we have from money we've put away over the years. This is primarily the gross reservoir project where we're drawing on the cash reserves that we've saved up for the years and, and now spending down that savings. And then the top two smaller bars are miscellaneous revenue we collect from fees and then also some developer contributions. So what I'm hoping that this, this slide shows council is, is where rates and fees fit in to the overall budgeted expenditures for this budget cycle and the next one. So have this in mind, when I, when I switch to the next slide, the, the next slide is going to dig into the rate and fee piece. Thank you. So this slide only illustrates the rate and fee component of that overall cash flow. And what we did for this one was look at the 10-year model. And again, this was, this was a, also what we hope is responsive to what we heard from council on September 18th, which is what does constrained versus unconstrained expenditures look like? So let me orient you on this one too. The Y-axis on this one is the cost for a single family water bill, starting on the left side 2023 and going through 2032. The, the single family water bill, if you, if you, if you think about the height of the bar being that total bill, what we did in this chart is we broke it down into, into how those dollars are used. So for 2023, looking at that one, there's a very small amount of blue at the bottom. That is debt service. So that's debt that we took out through bonds last year. So we pay that first. Green is our operations budget. So this is typically our, our equipment, our salaries, employees' time, overtime if we needed, treatment chemicals, that kind of thing. The, the gray is, is the under contract and SDC funded project work. So that's, let me back up. This doesn't include SDCs, but it's that gray that relates to the handout that you're looking at. The red is the most critical, that also aligns with the, the handout. Orange is that medium critical we talked about and then, and then the yellow at the top is the, I hate to say least critical because it's keeping the lights on and doing things like replacing water lines, which we need to do. So that's what the stacked bar is. So if somebody's, let's say I'm paying my water bill for the year, that is where, this, this describes how those dollars are being distributed across the utilities, budget and expenses. What this also shows is a forecast, not necessarily a recommendation today, we're only looking at 2024, but a forecast of what the 10-year model would estimate that the additional costs would be, that would be assigned to the rates and fees portion of our cash flow. The horizontal line is if there were no rate increase at all. And so for the next 10 years, we just kept our rates and fees the same. The diagonal line shows what, what our water bill would be if we kept our, our increases at the annual average of the last five years. So if you look back five years, we've increased on average 5.7% a year for water and that is representative of the diagonal line. And then the, what I would call unconstrained expenditures are the full height of each of these bars. So when we heard from the council that you're interested in seeing, well, what are the impacts of a constrained budget versus unconstrained? This is the chart that, and it's special thanks to council member Pfeiffer first, who's on this one, that helps, I hope, illustrate the types of trade-offs that we would need to make if we went with a constrained versus unconstrained budget. So I can use a specific example for 2024 where the diagonal line crosses through the yellow at the top. If we were only going to raise our rates 5.7%, we would need to eliminate or postpone the projects above that line. So we would be eliminating or postponing the projects in yellow on your handout. If we were to continue to do that in the next year, we're starting to cut into the red projects in, in the future years. And those are the ones that, that we deemed as most, most critical from a public health risk and also span of impact to the community. So I, I feel like I'm, I want to pause here because I think this is an important one to understand in the context of our recommendation for next in the context of our recommendation for next year. And that is, what our recommendation does is it would allow us to fully fund in 2024 debt service, operations, existing projects and process, all of our red, most critical projects, and then also all of our yellow projects, which again are keep-the-lights-on, and they don't go away. But that's, this is really why we believe the recommendation we're bringing forward is the right one.
Sharon, I've got a question for you. Going back to the previous slide, which showed the cash flow for water fund?
Yes.
If you can go back to that.
Can you go back, Candace, please? Yeah.
There you go. And I know this, you know, if I was looking at this not knowing that there's other things that go into it, if I look at the big sheet that you handed out today for water, you're showing total cost estimates of $81,105,000. On the slide that's up before us right now, you're showing cash flow of about $105 million. An uninformed individual or somebody who wanted to attack this would say, well, wait a minute, you've got more cash flow than what you show for need for your cost estimates. And I'm assuming that the difference is the operations cost, what we pay for water, all those kinds of things.
That's, thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. So what we have here are kind of approaching our budget from two different angles. What the chart here shows specifically is system development charges, and the CIP project list may not include all of those system development charge projects. I'm going to pause to see, I've got some folks who are online helping me out. So this is CIP plus operations plus debt service.
Now, that's what, so somewhere you need to include, you know, you've got the big sheet that you gave us today, the 11 by 17, that just has the cost estimates of $81 million, you've got to then add to that what are additional operations costs and the CIP and everything else to show where that comes in in relationship to the cash flow that we have available.
Thank you, and we'll make sure those match. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But this is sort of new territory for us. We actually built some of this in Power BI, but I think that not including things like, you know, debt service payments are part of why you're not seeing the full match of the two.
Because...
We can absolutely provide them.
Yeah, because I think naysayers would say, well, wait a minute, you're going to be generating more money than you show that you need, but I know that there's the other components of that that bring it up to that level.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And I think you may see the same thing on the sewer and storm side.
I'm sure we probably will. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, it's just the balance sheet is what you're now looking for is that difference. You just need to show that.
Yep.
And good. You know, Sharon, I honestly don't have a question for you. Because seriously, I, you know, being critical over the years, you hit everything I asked for. I mean, I'm sure Marriott might have a question. I saw him writing some stuff down, not in a negative way, he might have something. But no, I really do, because one of the most challenging questions I had, I think you did your best to answer it, which is the next slide over, which is this one. And I think you got there as best you can with what I asked for, which is a really complex asset. For those who don't remember, I asked for, how do I see what the rates would cover, which projects and debts and so forth? And how do we get it on a visual to say, you know, if we do nothing, what does it look like to our money, which is very clear, to me, it's clear? What do we stay at the 5.7 over the last five-year average? Or what do we do with the dollars if we follow this trended path? And what it clearly shows to me is, and this is what I was asking, is which critical jobs or projects can we not do? And this at least gives me the dials to decide, am I going to put our city at risk to do nothing or to do 5.7? And that's a risk factor I think we as council need to make that decision on, which is balancing revenues versus risk or benefit-risk analysis. That's for us to decide where we're going to land on it, because at the end of the day, we deal with the budget. So I think, I have to applaud the team in a short window to come up with something. I'm sure next year you'll get a little bit better, because I can't see orange and red. But that's the only criticism I can give you. But you got to the dials I was looking for to understand, because now this visually gives me an idea saying, like you said, in 2025, half of the red projects will not get done. Okay, so now I have a list, I can go back to my list and say, okay, well, these red ones in 2025, oh, no, you know, now I can actually relate the graph to the actual project, or at least a list of projects that are in that category. So it's more of a comment than questions. Seriously, I'm a little blown away right now because I don't know what, because I have been, you know, critical and asking a lot of questions around this, and I'm very impressed to get this far. So maybe one will pop up, but right now I don't have one. Yeah, I'm sure everyone's good with that.
Thank you. You know, I just, I want to tell you that the team worked extremely hard to pull these together and created some models in Power BI that didn't exist before. So we really worked closely with our IT team, and it was an all-hands-on-deck effort, I think, to create something we hoped would be useful, and I'm glad that you're finding it to be that.
And before I let the next person go, just think of it this way, this is an enterprise, and we have to be transparent within government, and this is just, I think, your part of the organization's effort to show that transparency. And this is at least leaning forward into the subject, and I think we can continue to build on this. And can you, because you're going to have to do this again next year, Sharon, you know, there's going to be new people up here, and you're going to have to do a rinse and repeat. So just, my recommendation right now is just take this and keep building on it so that we get into this cadence of understanding the story, because this is a journey, this is not going to be a one-and-done effort. Thanks, Sharon.
Marriott? Sharon, a quick question for you. Do you want specific questions now, or would you like to finish your presentation on the wastewater and stormwater before we get into details? Or what would you like to do?
Sure. Well, you know, I'm happy to answer questions in this workshop format as you're thinking of them. I know I did a lot of talking without pausing, but we're paused now, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think let's keep the dialogue going.
Okay, good. Well, let me ask you a couple of questions then. So in, another perspective to look at this is from the customer's perspective as opposed to from the enterprise's perspective. And so I did that, and I went home and I pulled out my last two water bills for two properties, one being my house that I live in, and the other one being a house that I rent that I pay the utilities on. And when I apply the, both the service fee and then the new water rate to my last water bill, which was due here first of October, it's a 15% increase on one and a 16% increase on the other in the total increase in the amount that me, as the payer, has to pay. So it's a little bit above the 14% or the 12 or 14%. And so I'm sensitive to that, because, and I will say that my two properties are probably a little bit unique in that I don't water anything outside with treated city water. But for eight or nine months of the year, neither does almost any house in towns, so while they may have higher consumption in the summer, in the wintertime, their consumption would be very analogous to mine. And so the specific question I have is that if the rate increase, if the service fee increase were the $4 you're proposing, but the rate increase, instead of being 12% or 10%, what does that change in the total amount collected within the water fund? I think a couple of slides back, you had one that showed that this was $4 million and something dollars' worth of new revenue. So if the rate increase were 10% instead of 12%, what does it do to that number?
So, okay, so when we, when we model the adjustment like you are describing, council member Marriott, it is, it's in a sophisticated model that considers all of the different types of customers we have and the different range of utilization that they have that are in our estimates. So it's hard for me to just say it's this many dollars. But just from a ballpark perspective, we're asking for $5 million, almost $5 million. So maybe less than $1 million in additional, sorry, in revenue that we would not receive with an adjustment like that. I'd be happy to give you a more specific answer, and we can run the model and estimate that. But if I may, what I'd like to do is point out, what we're trying to do with, the next slide, please, Candace, is show that any amount of reduction in revenue would require us to cut into our yellow-level critical projects. That's probably the best answer that I've got for you off the top of my head.
Okay. So it seems to me I'm going to do just a little back of the napkin here. If it's $5 million in new revenue with the service fee and then the rate increase both, the taking two points off the rate increase certainly wouldn't affect the new revenue by 20%. It would affect it by certainly much less than that. It would be, it would be a smaller number than $1 million, it would be somewhere down there. My second question was going to be, if that was the decision of council, you know, I like this big sheet you gave us with showing all the water projects. If you, if that was what you had to work with, what would your choice be as far as, how would you adjust this model? In other words, my assumption would be you'd take something out of the yellow category and either not do it at all, or you'd do it later. It would get, it would get just pushed, pushed over a little bit. And the reason I ask these questions is, I think, I think we have two different, two different interests that we as city council members need to keep in mind here. I appreciate the, all the work that has gone into this from a standpoint of what's the condition of our water system now, what does it need to be in the future, how do we get from where it is now to where it will be in the future? And when looked at through purely that lens, I think that's where we come to the slides that you've done, and I think you've done a fantastic job on these. But the other way to think about it is, you know, with the proposed increases, like my water bill is going to be, you know, 15%, you know, my water bill is going to double in less than six years. And then it'll double again, six years after that. And while right now water is not a significant expenditure, especially for someone like me, for people who are on the edge, it is a significant expenditure. And particularly when we look at in what's really a relatively short amount of time, doubling people's water payments and then doubling them again in another short period of time to fulfill this model, I think it's reasonable to look at, do we, do we have this right? Is it not possible to push this down a little bit and take some of these projects, and whether it's stretch them out or find a better way or a different thing, or, you know, whatever that might be, particularly the stuff that's, that's in the outer years of this plan, because I would assume those are far less definite at this point than the stuff that's immediately upon us. And I think that's kind of the question that I'm trying to get at would be, what would the ramifications to the plan be if we looked at it from a consumer point of view, not necessarily from a, what do we do with this infrastructure point of view? And I don't know if there was a question in there, but sorry to filibuster so much.
Could I respond to your non-question? Looking from the consumer's perspective, that is exactly what we're doing in ensuring that we have the infrastructure to provide the water. We can come back to you next week with that general calculation of what the 1% means as far as the revenue, and we can get a little bit more specific on the projects. But in this initial year of these rate increases, it is to ensure that we're able to provide that water, and it is council's policy direction that considers that risk. But we don't believe we're proposing anything beyond what we should be proposing related to risk.
Well, wasn't part of the original concept that one of the numbers was like a 25% increase rather than what's being proposed?
We did, that's correct. So we did trim down what is recommended to align with that lower rate increase. We have pushed things out.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Well, and I think, Sharon, I've heard you say this, so I just want to make sure that I understand it, so I do have a question. These are projects from the yellow all the way to your orange and red, those are all to keep the lights on, right? You said it on the yellow, but you mean everything above that. Obviously, criticality is important.
Thank you. There isn't anything on here that's not keep the lights on.
Okay.
There are, I mentioned earlier, you might remember, the slide that showed that tremendous growth period for the city, and it's that period of infrastructure that we're entering into a time of really great demand for that reinvestment. So thank you, council member Pfeiffer, that is absolutely true. The red here, in this particular chart we're looking at, is specifically around the Arvada plant. We, as part of the master planning work, looked to see what's the most cost-effective way to be able to continue to provide water treatment, and especially from our peaking perspective, the Arvada plant being the plant we operate in the summertime, so that we can cover irrigation demand. When we went and did that work in the master plan, we looked at, well, can we extend the life of that plant by doing additional investment? Is that a less expensive option than just replacing the plant brand-new? And when we looked at it, and we looked at the bones of that plant, you may remember, I talked about the Arvada plant as being a manufactured home kind of version of a plant, that it was actually more expensive to do reinvestment on that plant versus building new. We could build new cheaper. So, you know, those types of trade-offs, we really have done a lot of work throughout to try and make sure that we were hitting the most critical projects at the right time so that we were reducing the risk of failure of existing systems, but also not sinking too much money into systems that were going to go away. So that was a long answer to your question, council member Pfeiffer, but I think the short answer is yes.
So, and I don't think I heard, obviously, you don't, I was trying to think of how to word this, I don't hear that there's any nice halves, and if there was, they're definitely not in here, right? I mean, this is all critical, like you said, keep-the-lights-on, needed, because, I mean, I just want to make sure that's crystal clear, which I believe that's what you've said. And then, you know, the plant is $1.5 million. I think we all have to realize that that plant's going to be the biggest expenditure here. And the last comment I'll make on this is, other than roads, I think this is probably our, one of our most expensive assets we have. You know, I, you know, when I think about, and I preach asset management, you all hear me talk about it all the time, and if you think about asset management, when you have an asset that's, how many billions of dollars it's worth, or if we were to do it today, I mean, that's the value it's worth. In the value of it, this is, we're only putting a little money towards a very expensive asset that has to survive for generations beyond us. So, and I get the consumer at the end, because I'm going to be one of these people, and I pay a lot more than this, just kids taking long showers.
I have kids, too.
Yeah.
If you all would just adopt the policy that I recommend every year in my state of the city.
I teed it up for you, mayor, I teed it up one last time to get it out there. You know, I get it, but I think for now, I appreciate the 10-year view of this. I think this is, like, this is a good chart to kind of see the reality of the trajectory we're going into. But for this council, we're only looking at 2024 right now. And when we look at 2024, is that an acceptable risk today for its effort? Yes. And I support where the team is going now. I appreciate you putting the data more visually in front of us, and really kind of, the storytelling at the beginning, Sharon, you did a fabulous job doing that. That was a lot better and concise and really on point, and I really appreciate you going over that history with us as well. And next year, we're going to have that same discussion. Doesn't mean you're going to get the, I don't know what you're asking for, maybe next year 15.8 or whatever might be the next number. 15.8 or whatever might be the next number. You may or may not, but we're going to do a rinse and repeat on the conversation, and we'll decide where that is. And maybe costs go down and variables happen, and we just don't know what, it may be water from Denver Water, which will never happen, maybe they go down in cost, but say it does, there's just variables we don't know year over year. And I think this at least gives us an idea of what the trajectory could or should look like or may look like. And then every year, it's up to the council to adjust the dials based on the risk. So, great job by the whole team in short order. I'm really impressed. So, this is at least, this is a better conversation. I would like to have these earlier than October would be nice. Maybe more in August would be better for us to have these conversations. So, that's the only thing I'd give feedback on, but great job.
Thank you.
Sharon, Ms. Ferre, do you have any questions at this point?
I do not, thank you.
Very good. I see no other lights at this point, so Sharon, you can continue on with your rest of your discussion. I assume it's going to be pretty similar for the other funds.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll talk about the sewer fund and stormwater fund next. We do have an update following that on existing projects, and then we'll wrap it up.
Very good.
So, next slide, please. Okay, so this is a chart for the sewer fund, mirrors the chart for the water fund. You can see again where we have system development charges at the bottom, rates and fees in red, fund balance in green, and some miscellaneous revenue. So we're going to zoom in on that red piece of our cash flow and go to the next slide. This slide has the same format as the one we just spent some time on in the water fund. So it shows that we have debt payment in blue. Oh, gosh. Let me make sure I say this right. Green is operations, gray is in progress, capital projects, red is critical projects, and then going into yellow, I don't think there's any orange on this chart. So the breakdown of this looks a little bit different in part because the red projects are trunk line projects that do have wide impacts if they're not, they don't move forward. Those are impacts on the growth side, especially putting our operations at risk if we don't do them. So the same approach to helping understand constrained versus unconstrained budgets here, we use the horizontal line to show what, over 10 years, what would it look like if we had no increase to our rates. The diagonal line is the increase of 4.2% rate increase, which is our five-year, past five-year average. And just like the water chart, you can see anything above that 4.2% line all the way up to the unconstrained budget would be things that we would need to look at the handout that has all the projects color-coded and figure out what we would cut if we were not fully funding the rates and fees as we recommended. So, once again, we recommend the increases that we brought forward before. What I hope this chart does is help explain that we are, especially on the sewer fund the next couple of years, in a position where we have a lot of highly critical projects that we want to be able to deliver. So there's no questions on that. I'll go to the storm fund.
Actually, Sharon, I-
Actually, Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, I have a, not so much a question, but a comment on this one.
Sorry.
So, I appreciate this chart on this one, and this makes a ton of sense, and I wish the water one looked like this, because as this shows, that we're going to have some relatively hefty increases, rate increases, for a few years. But obviously, we get on top of it, because in your out-years, you're showing, you know, 4% increases, and I think that's a reasonable response to we have infrastructure needs now, this is how we go about doing it, and, you know, we maintain a reasonably, a rate that follows inflation. I would love it to see whether on the water side, whether it just takes a longer projection of things, but, you know, the yearly, year after year after year, 12 and 15-year percent increases can't go on forever, and obviously, this only goes to 10 years, but it gives the impression that it goes on forever. Where in this particular fund and this chart, this shows we've got some work to do now, we'll get the work done, and things will move forward. So I appreciate the view of this one much better than the other one.
I wonder to what extent if we had done what the original study indicated of a 25% increase in the water rate for 2024, if that would have decreased the rates in the out-years?
I think, not running the model in all of its steps, I think that it's exactly what would happen. What we're trying to do is raise revenue for these projects that are, they're the reinvestment projects, they don't go away. So if we could raise, you know, more funds in one year, then we have a new basis for the future year percentage increases. A comment I'll make here, too, is I would like to see this as well. The water side, on the water side, we are, we need to fund a water treatment plant, and that's the big difference. Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, thank you, and thank you for the feedback. Next slide, please. So this is the cash flow for the stormwater fund. The big difference here is we don't collect a system development charge on new development to help fund our stormwater infrastructure. So the bottom bar here is rates, and then we have some cash balance forecasting some debt service a couple of years out. We do get some funds, I want to point out, on the orange bars at the top, sorry, the top of the bars that are in orange, those are funds coming in from Mile High Flood District and also from FEMA. So I think that's a good example of where we would like to see more trends like that, where we're able to leverage funding sources from other agencies and bring them in to help us pay for the work we need done. So in the red and rates, are his rates and fees on this chart. Can we go to the next slide, please? And this is what the cost allocation for a single-family stormwater bill looks like. And so again, you can see here, we don't have any debt service the first couple of years, that's the blue, merely operations and capital project delivery. We have, we have work we're doing right now to prioritize the criticality of different projects, so it's taken us a couple of years. I think that's part of the reason why you're seeing this slightly different pattern here, too. But there's certainly an ongoing need for not just reinvestment, but water quality and flood control projects. And then you can see there's a very small diagonal line there. I think the annual increase was something like a percent, less than a percent over the last five years. Next slide, please. So this is also a responsive to a request we heard from council was, what if we looked backward and forward in terms of our overall trends? So this chart on the time axis on the bottom, this one starts in 2019 and goes through 2028, so it's a little bit different than the, than some of the charts that only looked forward in the 10-year model. This one looks backward to 2019. And I think what it shows is that five years ago, we were in that 2% to 4% range, which was typical to us for a long time. Again, this is indexed to an annual single-family bill, water, sewer, and storm. So, you know, we did that for a long time. We did this 2% to 4% rate increase for a long time, and so what we've started to do in the last couple of years with the implementation and financial strategy is, I think, reflected in now some more aggressive projected increases for an overall bill. Understanding, again, the timing on this is largely driven on the reinvestment side from the fact that we had that growth period, 50, between the 50s and 70s last century, and a lot of that infrastructure is aging and aging fast now, which is the basis driving that change in the shape of the curve here in the next few years. Okay, so let's go to the next slide, please. And I want to show, this is the last major section of tonight's presentation, is to show what we're delivering. I want to assure the council that we have been staffing up, we've been leaning into relationships with consultants and contractors. We have been sort of shopping around our projects to make sure that folks out in the private sector know that they're coming, and the result of that is we have a deep bench now of folks that want to work with us, want to design our projects, want to construct them. So I'm going to refer you to the fourth handout that's in front of you, it's the one that does not have the blue bar at the top. And what this is, is a Gantt chart looking backwards and forwards to 2022 and then into 2024 for these three years of project delivery. And there's a lot of different ways that we could celebrate our successes. You hear us talk about the bond projects. We were happy to dig into this as much as council would like, especially in the year ahead, to provide updates. But what I hope you see is a snapshot of what projects have been funded, what projects we're planning on using the 2024 funding in, and that the engineering team is delivering them. So, next slide, please. I also wanted to reemphasize this message that these are keep-the-lights-on projects, so all the projects that you're seeing that are in the phases of delivery on that handout are to support this reliable level of service. These things don't, they didn't happen overnight, we didn't get into this situation overnight. But what we're doing now is I think we have a really great plan to address the known issues we have. I haven't showed a lot of photos tonight, and I like to show photos. You maybe recognize some of these, but from a condition standpoint, the left photo is Foundation Jack holding up a portion of our Ralston Water Treatment Plant filter bay. The picture in the middle, there may be a couple of familiar faces in there, that was from our field trip to the North Trunk Line, that's our manhole at 76th and Sheridan, where our sewer runs very shallow. We're doing a lot of work along that line for condition and capacity right now. We actually have bolted down that manhole. So for those of you who are present at that tour, we had talked about, I think, putting a big rock on it or maybe parking a truck on it so it didn't pop up when it rained. Now we've got a great lock on it, but that's only going to get us so far. And then the picture on the right is Ward Road south of 60th, where there was major flooding last year, and part of the root cause of that flooding was undersized stormwater infrastructure. So our team is out there, our operations team sees these things, manages through them, but when we're dealing with this reality, what we want to do is go out and fix it. Next slide, please. So council had asked how much of the money that was budgeted for these types of projects has been spent. So that's what this pie chart shows for the water fund. So we had a total of about $73 million, that includes gross reservoir projects budgeted. You can see about half of that money is spent, the rest of it is in either design or bid construction. Some of it designated to operations, and that type of operations budget is the smaller-scale, typically water distribution system infrastructure. So we are aggressively spending it. We, oh, and there's also, one piece of this is replacing the roof of the Ralston plant. So next slide, as to show the similar data for the sewer side. So we've got $21.5 million budgeted for that, and for that, you can see that we spent about a quarter of it, we've got another quarter in design, and then the rest is bidding construction. And part of the reason we've got over half of it in bid construction fees is these are major, really expensive components to the trunk line projects, and so, you know, the next one that moves forward is going to take a big chunk out of that. But we are able to, we are able to deliver. Go to the next slide, please. I want to point out a couple more things on that handout that you have. So first of all, the red and the yellow correspond, and the gray correspond to the other charts that we saw to show in-progress work and then upcoming critical work that's red and yellow. What I like about this chart also shows that we have needed to add staff to actually deliver these, and we have. So back at the beginning of 2022, we only had four engineers, and now we've got nine working on this work. It's coming in just in time to be able to deliver in 2024 on construction. So the Gantt chart reads left to right with lightest gray being earlier planning phases in the project, darker gray being construction phases. So as you can see here, we're planning, we've done a lot of planning and for both water and super projects, there'll be a lot of contract and construction delivery in 2024. Next slide, please. All right, so this is the near conclusion of my presentation. I do want to talk about what next steps are, so next slide, please, Candace. So city council passed ordinances last Monday, as you may recall, in first reading, and those ordinances reflect the rate and fee recommendation we presented on the 18th. We provided more information to you tonight. Next Monday is the public hearing and the second reading of those ordinances. If approved, those rates and fees would go into effect in January 2024, and we would move forward with the projects as presented to you in detail tonight, enabling us to do all of the, all of the keep-the-lights-on projects that our teams prioritize, not postponing any for future years. If not approved, our plan would be to return with what some specific recommendations would be to budget expenditures, something we haven't talked a lot about tonight, but just a reminder, we do have a lot of projects that are both reinvestment and capacity-related. So we're able to fully fund capacity-related projects with the new system development charge schedule, but if we're not able to keep up the full project budget with rate and fees, then we're going to need to talk about delaying those. And that's not our recommendation. It's been a priority for us to keep these projects moving, especially the highly critical ones. But if not approved, that it would be a step that the city team would take to adjust what we're doing. And then the other thing I want, we talked in the September 18th meeting about affordability, about relatively low utilization of some of the offerings we have to support those folks that are struggling with paying their water bills. We do have hardship credits, we have payment plans, we can connect folks to federal funding that in some cases have wiped out thousands of dollars of bills for them. What we want to do is, and we will do, is continue enhanced outreach for customer support, for communications, highlighting, we've talked to with our communications team, highlighting on our website, you know, hey, if you're having trouble paying your bill, here are some steps, here are some offerings, and then hopefully get some higher participation than that as well. So with that, that's the conclusion of my presentation. I really do care and love this, care about and love this role that our team plays in the community. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about it.
Thank you. Ms. Ferre, do you have anything at this point?
No, it's been very informative. Thank you.
And I don't see any other questions. Well, Mr. Mormon.
Thank you. I just want to, again, thank you, Sharon, and your team for this presentation. I think it was very useful. I also appreciate you mentioning and recognizing the bipartisan infrastructure bill. It sounds like you were doing what you can to tee things up for that as that continues to evolve and look for how we could acquire those funds. I hope we can be very aggressive on that and other resources, and- I hope we can be very aggressive on that and other resources, and, you know, best-case scenario, we come back next year and you can say that we've gotten some of those funding and that we can readjust our thinking on this and our approach because of that additional funding. So I appreciate your work on that and hope we can be really aggressive. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, just a quick request in that sense, we're going to be meeting on this for a second reading on the ordinances next week. If you wouldn't mind taking back my question and bringing an answer to me about what does a, what would a 2% rate difference make in dollars collected as far as your anticipated new revenue? I would appreciate that.
Thank you. That's definitely something we can respond to this week.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
I just want to reiterate, great job. I had tough questions, and I expected, my expectations were high, and you guys got really, you hit it. So you answered all my questions because this is a topic that's been a sore wound for me for years, and I think that what we can learn from tonight's presentation is what we should put into the, into our, maybe our website about transparency in our rates, and maybe it could storytell with our citizens as well. I'd hate for them to just point back to this PowerPoint or to this presentation, but it'd be nice if some of these graphs and that storytelling can be really visualized on our website so that when people do see their rate increase, they know the why behind it. It's always hard to tell that.
We will do that. I agree, we have some new tools for storytelling.
Yeah, absolutely. So great job to the team. Thank you for doing it in short order.
There was definitely a golden thread that wove right through it all. Ms. Gillis, do you have anything else you need from us tonight?
No, sir.
Very good. We stand adjourned.